Here Anna Barbieri, here. Vice Chair Greg Shilton. De Geizer.
Here.
Brett Hale.
Oh.
Emily Gray, here. Keith Peppert.
Here.
Laurie Stringham, here. Matt Lincoln. Nick Sudbury.
There.
Patrick Schaefer. Robert Dignan.
Here.
Sherry Ork, the sister. Tom Desire.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you Caterina. Okay, we'll move forward with the consent items. Are there any comments or questions regarding the consent items? And that would be the board meeting in November and adoption of the resolution after five weeks' term. Making a motion. Making a motion to approve the consent item. Sherry Orne, is there a second? Laurie Stringham, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you. I'll open this meeting for public comment. If you have the space this year, if anyone here that would like to make a comment? Anyone online? Okay, seeing that there is none, I will close the meeting for public comment. We'll move forward with the business items. 3.1 Adoption of the Resolution Recognizing Trace Sandra. Trace Sondra Quality Assurance Inspector Retiring After 21 Years.
Then Chair goes to the Trace, right back here?
Trace, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please. And meanwhile, um, the Chair reads the resolution. But I just want to say thank you for your great service over the past, well, 21 years. You came on before I did. And you and Brett came in and were hired as their quality, first quality assurance inspectors for the Southeastern Division. And then as we evolved, you've really taken on and made the program awesome. And you trained Kevin, who's one of our new quality assurance inspectors, and helped out with Jane, our competitive building coordinator right there, and the GM and our manager. But from a personal thank you and little gift, you really deserve something. A nice gift, and this is it. Thank you. Yeah, well, that's from the town of Brighton. Lily Paul down there. Help me out. Yes, she is. That's a little bit of that.
Well, Trace, let me read this. Anywho, sorry, about.
Go ahead. We want to make a picture.
Where on the Block Dash Front Quarter Recycling District, formerly known as the Salt Lake County Municipal District, almost when you were here. It's been that long. Renamed the Block Dash Front Recycling District effective January 1st, 2013, whereout by November 10, 2009, the Salt Lake County created Administrative Control Board. And on March 16, 2022, the county council recognized the district as a local district. And the board of trustees was granted full governing authority, whereas Trace Sondra was hired as a side low equipment operator of September 2003. Wow. And you were promoted to Quality Insurance Inspector in 2007, and whereas this dedicated public servant has served the district and its residents faithfully and diligently for 21 years. And whereas this honor, Quality Assurance Inspector is retiring. How dare you? The district wishes to express appreciation to Trace for his years of dedicated service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board that Trace Sondra was appreciated for 21, we applaud all your great efforts, Trace. On behalf of. I bet you have some stories to tell. It's a question that would be a best seller. Okay. 3.2 Adoption of the 2025 Budget and Fee Schedule. We'll turn that over to Pam.
Oh, is that your point of order? Did we have a vote on that or what?
Oh, yeah. Yes, thank you. Is there a second? Emily? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have talked to the board. We don't like giving up at these points. The most fantastic. Thank you very much. Okay, adoption of the 2025 Budget and Fee Schedule, Pam?
Okay, there's only one minor change to this information that was presented to you, and that was also a part of the public hearing on November 18th. So I'll turn it over to Helen Kurtz, our wonderful finance director, to just walk through where we're at.
Okay, as Pam said, it's all exactly the same except for the recycling fees under the column titled Estimated Current Year 2024. We adjusted that to be more accurate. We changed that from, I think it was about 1.4 million, down to 900,000 is what we expect to have spent on recycling fees at the end of the calendar year. That is the only change to the budget. And the, or just the estimated projection, the budget itself and proposed budget 2025 is still exactly the same.
That includes that 4% cost of living adjustment, and then the 2% on an anniversary date when employees pass their annual evaluation, or if at the top of the range, it's the annual lump sum. I want to get that all included in there. And then also, just to shout out again to Hazel and our wonderful health insurance service brokers for your great efforts. Would you mind going through some of that premium information?
Yeah, we were really pleased this year to be able to keep the health insurance flat. No increases may have. Um, we did change vendor for the Dentsel and Person. That went slightly down. And then our life insurance is also new this year. We're going to Lincoln. And they kept it the same as last year. So no increases with our benefits this year.
Redwood is not easy. It is not easy. And credit. Thank you for looking out for new companies and competitive bids. That makes a big difference. So. Anything else, Pam, on that?
That is it unless there's any questions from the board or someone.
Okay. Um, I actually will take a motion on that. There's an approved 2025 Budget Fee Schedule evolution. Great for heading to.
Second.
And headed by Robert. So a motion by Emily, second by Tom Dignan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so the name with Nick Sudbury and Sherry Orne. And that motion passed.
And then I have stain, please.
And I'm sorry, who is, who is that?
Tessa Stitzer, Copperton, I have stain.
Okay, Tessa, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Absolutely. And our city council, if you've seen it, reported as a no vote. Is it the same?
Yeah. I'm not sure you can. It's considered a no vote.
Oh, thank you for that.
If you don't vote, it's considered a yes vote. If you have stain, it's considered a no vote. So I believe that is how it works.
Thank you. Tessa, that would be considered a no vote. Okay. We'll move forward.
Could she? Did we get a majority?
Yes. We just had two. Well, three. Okay. Uh, board nomination for 25. Can we move ahead of the knowledge, Brittany? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's the best, Tim.
Yeah, just to put, when I was on the planning commission at Taylor's Road for 10 years, if you didn't show up on the meeting where nomination for Chair were, you became the Chair. So make sure you were there unless you wanted. All right, well, I'm really excited about this. Board nominations for the 25, 2025 Board Vice Chair. I'll go ahead and take those nominations. Pam, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yeah, so the, by policy, the Board Vice Chair will succeed into the Board Chair position, and then that opens up the Vice Chair spot. And it is a two-year commitment because again, whoever comes in as Vice Chair this year would serve as Chair for 2026. And definitely want to recognize Board Chair Barbieri for your wonderful two years, really, but stellar leadership and. Yeah. Serving us both Vice Chair and Chair. Thank you so much.
Well, it's really been an honor to do this, and I appreciate your patience. I can be a real squirrel. But it's been a real honor to get to know many of you even better. And it's such a rewarding, you have a district to work with. It's. You run a remarkable program here, all of you. I, I'm just amazed all the time. And when I first came on board, I just couldn't believe that our garbage, I still think it's a miracle, our garbage is picked up every week, and it gets sorted, and you do it so efficiently. You have openly positive. And it's been an honor to associate with all of you. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to taking the different seat next year and passing this along. And there was a nomination. Emily Gray was nominated as our new Vice Chair, and Greg will be our new Chair. And so we need to. I need a motion on that, right? So I will take a motion on that unless someone else would like to throw their hat in the ring. I'm happy you can approve all that.
Okay, this team, no second.
Oh, wonderful. So Laurie is making a motion that we nominate Emily Gray as our new Vice Chair, and Greg will be our Chair. And Keith Peppert has given us the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Emily, thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and I think you'll really enjoy it. It's really, it's been a real learning experience for me to see how this organization runs. Look forward. And I look forward to a couple more years here. So, yes. Unless my residents pop me right out on my ear. 3.4 Requested Policy Amendment for Servicing Homes on Private Roads. Pam, do you want to take this? This is interesting, it's your news to the board. Private roads are treated a little bit differently at Woodford. Pam?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll do the introduction, and then I'll turn it over to our wonderful legal counsel, who have influence on this policy. But just to do an introduction, that this policy was adopted April 27th of 2020. And it is broad sweeping to basically the line that was in this policy that we're asking to have deleted, basically said that we could only sort of hold on private roads if a private hauler is not available. Well, they're available quite often, and there's going to be rare cases that they're not. And then in looking, and just so you know, the reason why it was broad sweeping was that we were looking at safety issues. Some of the roadways on private roads or HOA's are very narrow, and our trucks have a hard time navigating. Private haulers do have ability, there are some that have smaller trucks, not many. And then they also have the ability to provide a smaller can if that's what's needed. The best case scenario for the multi-unit complex is if they have a container site, but that, many of the HOA's just don't want to go that direction because of space, but that's their option. So at any rate, safety issues, we had overstep, unfortunately, in Herman City with the rapid growth out there. We started taking on complexes that were multi-unit. They go beyond the fourplex, the triplex or fourplex. So we had to rein things in. And again, I just want to say that's why it was broad sweeping. There was a case that recently came up where a homeowner reached out and basically appealed the decision that, and the policy that's on board right now. And it made sense in looking at this particular private lane, I'm going to call it, it's just off 3900 South, and it's where that white fence is illustrated, if everyone can see that. And you can see there's a sign down to the, to the right, or yeah, it says homes for sale. So the particular case on this, it was a parcel that had a single-family home, and it was torn down, and it's a private lane that has four single-family homes. There, a garbage truck, whether it's Woodford or private hauler cannot get down that lane. So the residents are going to have to do what the other residents do on 3900 South. And that's bringing their cans out to the road for us to collect. So it just makes sense in this case, and I have to wonder what other cases it may make sense where we want to pick up these homes because of economies and efficiencies of scale. Our truck's going to go up that road, and there's four homes that we can collect and take care of their waste recycling and also collect the fee for that service. So that's what opened up this case, and we have some proposals before you on a. Policy, and I'll turn it over to Rachel because she's the one I worked with. The idea was, can we open it up enough that we're not going to open up 10 doors long? So we do have some screening that we do when people do call in with a new build. If you would, go ahead and.
Sure, yeah. And in this, in this case, this home was. It was just a single home on that property. It already was being serviced by Woodford.
Yeah, thank you.
It, it is a little bit of a unique situation, which is the only reason that we've kind of decided to take a look at the policy. But it's just that before it, it gave us a hard no point. We had adopted in the policy that if there was a private hauler that could come in, that we had to say no. But in this case, like, we were already serving this property, you know? It's just that it's up to by it, and we're still not going to be going into the lane. They're still going to be bringing it out. So there's really no change to the district. So we just wanted to massage the policy a little bit to make it a little more clear. So if you scroll down to where we actually did the red lines, some of these changes are just. I don't know, not necessarily look at the list, it's a particular situation, but we were just making some changes. We added in the definition there of a property unit, which made things more clear. And I keep going down. For that.
With that one right there. We can first and then. I understand the line.
And which one?
The red line. One, one thirty.
Oh, okay. So that line is intended to mean that we still want to be able to say no when it's like an HOA type situation. So even though we're deleting the thing that says if the private company is not available to provide the service, we're not making that a requirement, but we still want it to be clear that it's not the policy for us to be considering taking on long, whole HOA's, you know? If you want to massage that.
I guess it was the way it read.
Yeah.
But maybe the district will limit new services for homes and private HOA's.
So the thought there, if I may, that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, I'm just thinking, I'm sure if I might, go ahead.
Yeah, so the thought there is that we're not going to take business away from a private hauler that's already providing service for that because we do get those requests from residents that don't have recycling, let's say, and they want to have recycling, and they're willing to pay the fee that we have. But the, and this is a policy question, you know, because I want to know from you all, I don't want to take business away from a private hauler. I think that gets us into trouble. However, there are those cases that we provide a higher level of service, and so I don't know. I'll be honest, it's a, I just don't want to take it away from them and have a, the thought that we are competing or stealing business, if you would. Thoughts, please?
No, I agree with the concept, I just don't know if I read it in some things.
Oh, okay.
If I can see the way I'm reading.
And I don't know if this is your question, this is a different question, but it's, I was wondering about this word already.
Yeah.
Because in this case, the fact nobody's picking up the trash right now is that, right?
That is correct.
So it does already limit the ability for the, they have to change the services of a private hauler, and then so could we just say is available? Instead of already, I don't know if that.
Is available.
I think that, I think that was the point, is that in cases where there's already a private hauler, because sometimes what she's saying is she'll get individual residents calling and saying, can you write a schedule? And she's saying, we're not, you guys already have a private hauler, we're not coming into that market.
What if it's like a new situation where they don't have anybody yet, and they're safe, like shopping around, put a private hauler as available?
That's why we took out that clause, and if the private company is not available, that's taken out, so we would be able to respond in that case. And if it does meet the property unit criteria and doesn't go beyond that fourplex, or, you know, a single-family home with four partners, that kind of thing, that allows us to evaluate that property to make sure it does fall into our charter. And, and allows us to say this is our.
To look at and talk.
Yes, yes.
The district limits, what is, to get this to the limit thing? It's like, are, so does this sense of say, if there's already somebody collecting there, we're not going to do it?
That would be, yes.
And so for me, I guess it's the word limit. The district will not provide service for homes on private roads or an HOA when a private hauler is already providing collection services.
If we say not, then there's no way we'd be able to do it. If we say limit, there might be cases where the private hauler isn't able to meet some specific need, and then we may want to.
What if we just assess?
Assess.
Instead of limit, I don't know. I guess it's a limit, it's just confusing to me. What does limit mean?
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Rachel, you're comfortable with the steps?
I just, tell me, I guess, what's your definition, the legal definition of limit? Because I don't know what it means.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that, but we think.
While you're pondering, Keith have a question or comment?
Like, I'm surprised how it reads, and I understand that most of the, the definitions all begin with the district. But it almost seems that the sentence should be inverted, where you're, you're bringing up, where if a private hauler is providing that service, then the district may assess and provide services for those homes. Rather than private haulers at the end. So you're beginning with, if they have a private hauler, we can assess on if they choose to.
Something like if the private hauler is already providing collection services to the district.
That's kind of. Need to be approached, too. I don't think.
Oh, yeah.
But, but this could leave it open if at any time we decide, hey, let's go out and look. We don't want to do that. But that is practically approachable, you know what I mean? I don't need to make this too complicated.
I would say the district will only provide services in those circumstances.
Renate.
Yeah, I was gonna figure, and we say that the district will not permit it and may assess. So not listening, you know, new services for homes that are already served. Which where you're the stepping on our attention. Then we need to assess.
I like that, Renate. I think we need to protect. Clearly defined that we're not.
Clearly defined.
Emily?
No, I'm agreeing. And it just got in. We have to talk to them.
Right, so I just want it to be real, for me, I want it to be clear what our responsibility is versus the private. And that there isn't a scene competition between the two. So however you would choose to address that.
Can we bring back, can we amend this and then bring it back for January's meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, I can get some better language. And in the meantime, are we good to proceed with this particular property on 3900 South?
I feel comfortable with that. And I do feel comfortable with the district will limit new services for homes on private roads. Want to add anything to that? Take that away. You don't play with that. So because I, I think it's leaving it with, will assess at least that newly open, newly broad, you know? The other question I have is, it seems like the others, like even like kinds of greater things with that, where those get, pretty bad, people are angered at, they're getting all the way out there. There's not going to be a problem with that, where they're going to try and say, you have to drive it, right?
That is correct. He's very, this particular homeowner that reached out is very understanding, and he said, I'm going to have to put it out there anyway, why can't you guys be the one to come by and get it? Which is really a nice compliment, that people want to.
The current homeowner, I just want to say true, because this doesn't come back to bite us when the next homeowner is like, oh, I'm not kidding, why can't you come get, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So that worked in this policy to become that, right?
And further on down the policy, you already had much of qualifications that had to be considered if you were ever going to say you have to run any of these areas. And, yeah, we've already covered ourselves for like, you know, if there's special, you need to pull it out further or.
I know some cities have some, have language to protect that as well. So, that we don't have to be taking a wheel there all down the back lane and hand a truck into one government. So, so the information are, so we are going to adopt this, or we're, we're going to withhold on this?
I think just give permission to proceed with this particular case, and then we'll bring back new language.
I think it is, then have a motion on that, that we accept the.
We do for the lane because there. Okay.
Now I make the motion to approve the service that these homes on this private lane and follow the intent of this. Policy and then bring the policy back.
Thank you for saying that.
A second? Emily, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
And who is that? I think he said aye. Oh, said aye, okay. That motion passes. So thank you for bringing that back, Rachel. We'll get that clarified, because I know that comes up. It comes up in city council when you're office, when people building. Not that Taylor's don't have anywhere to build. Okay, 3.2.
That's a good point. That's what brought this up, is that cities like Colley, Mill Creek, Taylor'sville, they're tearing down, rebuilding, and I don't want to spring, especially in those areas that we have the high economies of scale.
Good point.
One observation, the homes that are getting torn down probably have their cans out in the exact same spot.
Yeah.
If you bought the lot at the end and you have to walk, that's what the previous one.
Yes, you got it.
3.2 Adoption of the Human Resource Policy for PTO.
So at the last board meeting, we did string this up and explain a little bit about switching sick leave and vacation to one leave of PTO. Does anyone happen to want me to cover the, the all the points behind that, or do you have questions from last week or what?
I think I'll put it out there if there's any questions or concerns, rather than covering it again. If there aren't any, go ahead, Sherry. Laurie?
Um, I know that there are going to be questions, like you're aware, moving to the state federal holiday and not doing that on the first Monday, because we actually get in line with the federal holiday and not the state version of it.
Oh.
As you're aware, they're two different days. And this year was the third time that fell on two different days last year. And so we had some issues with that at the county. When that came up, they had people who had federal jobs had one day off. People who had state jobs had a different day off. And for those who wished to actually celebrate that day because of the day that their culture, they had to take it off as a holiday if they worked for any of our organizations in the state. And so I would actually wonder if it's something that we'd be willing to consider to allow them to have the federal holiday off instead of the state's holiday off to celebrate when they're actually doing all of the activity, federally recognized activities, which is on the actual federal champion and not the state holiday. So I actually would prefer that we celebrate it on the federal holiday and not the state.
Okay.
But if we're, if we're going to be flexible in our employee, then I don't know how you guys, if you have to pick it up when, you know, so I.
It's a work.
That's a different, yeah, that's a different day for people that have to work in holidays. So I'm just going to throw that out there and see what you guys all think because I know that because they work for the county this year.
So Laurie, if I heard you correctly in your first part, is that the state is moving toward.
There are the people moving to push at the state level.
But that is not happening for sure at this time.
I'm not sure, but. Not sure, but I know we, again, when it was first passed by the state. Every, everything fell towards the weekend, people were there and issue. This year was the third time people realized that, oh my gosh, same day. And so, the human issue this, this last year, and, um, people were pretty upset over it.
We're gonna do whatever you all would like to do.
I'm worried that because it's a working holiday, that if we can just wait until the state actually makes those, you know, we. Or make them, because it's not actually a day that they would have to work, that would have to coordinate with other people per se. It's a day that we pay them for holidays, is that for us?
Frontline, yes, but we collect garbage and recycling on, uh, all holidays except for the big three. Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's, but the office does close. So we would just follow whatever policy we'd like us to do, uh, with that particular one, but yeah, if you wanna wait.
To get the.
Sure, yeah, so beware, I know that there's gonna be ways for spotting, um, the, the, the community. Do you change the holiday? I'm sure whatever's gonna be easier to help people celebrate.
Yeah.
So wait, maybe wait or whatever, that's.
Do you wanna wait?
To go on that particular one?
Just be aware that it may change.
I would suggest we wait, we keep it with the state rules right now, if there's anyone who approaches you with an issue, I mean, we could. Meet and grant an exception for a person if needed.
Okay.
And I think that might be better for now, until you want legislation, if you have anyone approach you that's concerned about it. Okay, we can look at that.
That's a great idea, Rachel.
Okay, do you, do you think, I, I, yeah, I have one other comment about, I did receive a letter, and we all received a letter off the. Permanent employee, her concern about this change.
Yes.
For sure, and I really would think that we should acknowledge that here, because it's important, things that we do here affect people's lives. And, and I appreciate that and respect that, um. It's difficult to make, to make a decision, because I acknowledge what they're talking about, that it is a reduction of perceived for them, right? Um, but I think that we have to make a, a bigger picture decision. And, um, sometimes it's, it continues for a while. And, um, but I often believe that, that we've done a really good job and been very conscientious about salary. And we've done mid-year salary adjustments and all kinds of things to try and keep them, so they're capable of really keeping up with where they need to be. And don't get me wrong, they're probably never stay up before they need to be, so. Usually the reality of, of life, but, um, I, um, I just really wanna acknowledge that, that. We appreciate them, that we're faithful about that, or we understand that this is a change in some ways for them. But we hope they, I personally, I should say, we, I hope that the compensation packages that we offer and the benefits plan. That those visits will, will compensate over a period of time for changes.
Thank you, Sheri.
That's about your, like, comment, uh, yes, I have to follow on with your comment. Um, because, and, and I think I've addressed part of those questions, uh, with Pam. Is that, there's a select number of people who have large bank of, of, you know, sick time. Uh, and, uh, this transition, there, there, the, the dollar amount is. Not necessarily punitive, but it really is an impact, and what I did suggest, in some manner, that. And, and as expressed, when I, you know, my, my military version of this kind of activity. Where you can get along some upfront, but then you lose, uh, your retirement, portion of your retirement in the end. So you get a reduction in, in your, in the military retirement.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so in, in doing that, and that was part of my, my thought process, just this having some means of. That balance, uh, in their sick time, being able to roll that into their. In your F account in some manner. Either be an increase over a period of time, so there's nominal impact to the actual budget itself. But yet still accomplish what this whole program's dying to do, is again, reduce liabilities. For, for the, the district. And, and, yes, the, the email that came out from the person, uh, uh, he, you know, that was nice. Read and account just, uh, said that, it, it does, they're perceiving that they're being punished by this. And, and, yeah. Payroll practices increased, keeping up with, uh, living, trying to make sure that they have ample income. Cause again, anything we do is reacting, and that proactive, it, it makes those payroll changes, because. We don't need departments on being, departments to be, and. And I don't know, do we need to actually do this, make this decision at the beginning of the, the budget year? Or is this, are we gonna continue to, to make this budget change or make this change mid-year?
That, that's a good question, um, there's a benefit to do it right at the beginning of the year, because there's, um. There's been certain circumstances where, um, leave rolls over. Is, and so right now, uh, well, Helen, do you wanna chime in here for me? Because I know you have outlined for the beginning of the year and payroll and so forth.
Um, as far as, well.
Right at the beginning of the year.
I think what you're referring to is, are, you know, right now, with our current program, the leave cap for three hundred and twenty hours. That we have in place now, that will change if the proposed PTO program is accepted. It will, it will go up, you know, each level, it will increase from three twenty to three fifteen to three eighty. Um, but we do that at the start of the, the next year, so the first pay. Period that ends in January will have that three hundred and twenty hour cutoff. Um, and then our plan was to implement the PTO plan at that point. And that could increase people, or employees' leave for the full year of twenty twenty five. If we were to do that because of those cap increases that we're, we're suggesting, um.
Yeah, there's some winning that they would lose, if we have the three twenty, and then we do something in June. How do we navigate that change? If I'm not mistaken, it seems more that the concern is the high bank of sick leave. So I think that there's a consensus that this particular paid time off structure is palpable. And that, that's something that you of the boards, um, would like to see. It's just, what do we do with the conversion of the sick leave balances, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so, can there be, um, some adoption of the paid time off quality? With those leave banks changing, or the cats changing, and then a discussion about what to do with the balance? Um, because that seems to be where the angst is, and that's what I'm hearing from employees that do have those large things, they've saved it up. And they wanna use it at a hundred percent, well, I don't know how they're gonna do that unless they start draining it and they get close to retirement. And, and honestly, that's been a little bit of the culture, that I would like to have changed. But then how do we reward them for doing just that, they've been good stewards of their leave? Um, and only used it truly when they needed to, or, or if they even did, we have one employee that, I don't think he's ever called in sick. And unfortunately, there's times he just, he loses so much vacation, and for this guy, I'm like, please, take some time off. You know, so, there are the cultures that I hope will change, and we also have abuse of sick leave. And I hope that this will help change that, because it's, they're basically burning. The same bank of leave as this other one that they really see as an entitlement, and I get it, you know, we've said, hey, you've got these two things and they're benefits. So I understand, um, I don't know that we've come up with the perfect answer, we feel like we've come up with something workable. Obviously, it's for some folks, and I would say it's over a handful that are really upset about this. Uh, there's a supervisor that I talked to, and I said, how are you doing about this, because he's been out a long time. And we have two that are very veterans, and they have, both are like, I get it, I, do I like it? No, but do I understand the why? Absolutely. Um, one of them has a very high bank, and he's planning on doing the twenty five percent when he retires. But anyway, that's part of the, the why, it's also easier for employees to manage this, it's easier for us to manage it. Um, there are so many municipalities that have already gone this direction and done conversion. These, um, options that we have, the three options, are a hybrid of the models that we looked at. We looked at four different municipalities, um, and these are a hybrid, these three options. The number two was actually a suggestion from, uh, an employee. And then the number three is very similar to what West Valley City did when they converted. Um, there, as far as I know, and I don't, I don't know Sandy City, but I don't believe. That there was a city that offered three options, but I don't know what Sandy City did. So we're giving them more options than any of these folks that converted to a PTO. I don't know if that helped, I understand the concern. Um, I wouldn't suggest that we don't wait, I know there was the thought of grandfathering in, and we thought about that when we first separated. But then we have a two funky system that we're trying to manage and navigate and help employees navigate. I don't know if that helps to answer the question, but that's the why.
Um, just a couple of comments, Sheri and Keith, thank you very much. Um, I did not want to close this meeting without addressing this concern, because the dollar amount is, is large. And I know that it affects a lot of long-term employees. And, um, when I came on board in twenty twenty, there was a real, there was a strong effort to bring up the wages. That were competitive in the industry, and I think we've done that at the board. And even those that are starting out new, and compensated those that have been here for quite some time, and I feel really good about that. I feel like that they're competitive. I also just want to, um, acknowledge that, as Hazel mentioned, the life insurance. Were able to keep the prices down on, um, health insurance, and that is really a benefit to employees too. Health insurance goes up, you take a higher premium. I do know in the, in, in new hires throughout, just about any industry, younger people are looking for PTO. And I'm encouraged and grateful that Woodford has decided to go to a PTO, I think it's more transparent for employees. They feel like they're more in charge of their time off, and, and they can just take it whenever they need it, rather than coming up with different scenarios. Of why they're leaving, and I feel really positive about that. I'm grateful that you came up with different options, because I know that there are municipalities who, that this is just the way it is, take it or leave it. And so, I think those options really fall in line, of course, that's not gonna be the best choice. For some of those that really have banked up all these hours, that really, um, if you're banking up sick leave. It's to cut, it should be to cover the disability at any time, and Woodward offers that disability insurance. So, I, at the end of the day, as a board member and representing residents and taxpayers. We have to maintain the viability of what that's not wasted recycling. And with the recent fee increases, I know from Taylorsville, I've had a lot of people pushing back. And saying that these fees are, are high, um, they can't continue to go on like that. And if you run the numbers of what Woodward would have to pay out for every employee that thinks they're sick leave all the time. That doesn't make them a terribly efficient organization financially. And in some situations, Laurie can probably speak, this has been around a little bit longer, some situations. That just almost can crush an organization, when, when you have so many people leaving at the same time. And there's this huge debt on the books for banks' time, so. I appreciate all of your thought, and then I know it, it, we've taken, I think, a lot of time and a lot of effort. To go through each different scenario and the concern of, of the good employees that we represent, as well as. Those people that, uh, are receiving the services, and I know that they're appreciative, but I feel good about. Uh, the good things that we have done for the pay and the, and the benefits here.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I will take a motion on that.
Motion to approve the option of human rights for economy for paid time off.
If there's, Emily, thank you.
Second.
Robert, second, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I'll be there.
Becky? That motion's out. Thank you, thank you, Hazel, thank you, Helen, Pam, Rachel, thank you, Emily, Merry Christmas. Be back in this seat next year. Okay, question, considerations for the annual Apple award may be tabled for the January twenty seventh board meeting?
Yes, so, um, one of our employees mentioned, as we were talking about PTO. And asked, well, what about the Apple award, and I'll be honest, it was something that slipped under my radar. So I just wanna introduce to you what this award is, as the concept for now, and not action for adoption, because this is new. Since we talked in, on November eighteen, so the Apple award was introduced as part of the recog, uh, employee recognition program. Um, when I first started in two thousand, July of two thousand and seven, we rolled it out in two thousand and eight. And so it's a whole entire employee recognition program, and the Apple award is one for, um. I should have brought the pins in, but we have a gold apple pin and a red apple pin that we award employees, um, at the first part of the following year. If they have no sick leaves that they've used, then my goodness, um, then they get a gold pin and then, and a certificate. And then we roll over their, you know, sick leave of the thirty two hours into their vacation pay. So we can go ahead and do that this year, even if it puts them over the cap, we can still do, because we have two employees that have no sick leave. If I understand correctly, uh, who get a gold pin and a certificate, so this year we can still do that practice of rolling over the, the thirty two hours. And then we have some that have minimal sick leave, so what does that mean? Well, going forward, we wanna define that further, so minimal in the future will be, um, um, and we're gonna call it call-in. So it's not just, it's not the use of sick leave, because we know people get sick, they need to use their leave, but this is for call-in specifically. So those are the, the ones that hurt us the most, especially on the frontline with equipment operators calling in the day of. They're sick, or the night before, because we have a plan for that, right? So we're hoping to somehow reward those folks that don't call in, understanding people still need to call in. So we've had discussion and debate as an executive team and as a management team of. This is gonna encourage people to come in sick, I mean, it could, if we put dollars and cents to it, it very well could, so is there a different option of. Maybe we do the leave thing again, we roll over, or give, not roll over, we do some sort of granting of extra leave at the end of the year. That they can go into their PTO bank, so these are some of the concepts for now. And I don't know if you wanna ask questions now, um, but we thought that we go ahead and do the same practice for twenty twenty four, honor that. And then bring back into, uh, January, not July. Uh, January, uh, some more, uh, defined concepts on this, as we discussed with the management team and frontline employees. I know dollars and cents means the most, but is that realistic, and how much could that really cost?
And then how much could it? Sure, and how much could it really save us, because I know when we were talking, like you mentioned that. There, you know, there's a direct cost really, and then somebody calls in sick and things like that, so. What is it really costing them, people are calling in that, these things, and does it, does it offset that? How would that, how would we treat them about, because it's not just in and out of the book. And if it's four or five thousand bucks, so. And, and I guess, the information on how much, how much pay that, I think. Says if we roll, roll leave, how much, how much is that? Financial costing, and I understand there, there's the finances, and then there's a lower portion of it, completely understand that, but what I can quantify is the finance part.
Yeah, well, I think we need to bring back more information, is what I'm hearing, and totally respect that, yeah, what's the history? You know, there's been, I'm just going by memory, but, so we'll bring back stats instead of me going by memory.
Yeah, yeah, for me, I have a past and a future.
Okay.
And, and you will, you not allowed to be, I'm just gonna shut up this year with the thing, Apple award that you were currently doing. I think that's a lot of.
Absolutely.
Direction?
Direction, come back with the numbers and let me move forward with it after.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a fun award.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's hard on organizations to call in once, the people depending, right?
And there are people that are collecting those gold pins. They're on their hat. So they're, you know, anyway.
Yeah, and they're they're just out, you know, because they want to be driving with a fever.
Right. Because they want that balance.
Okay, Cam, uh, general managers report. Cam, Helen, and okay, though I should include all of these things when I whenever.
So yeah, um, just a a year-end report and wanted to start off with, if you'll, one of the the third bullet point basically is we strive for leadership designed to inspire employee innovation and empowerment for effective problem solving that improves organizational performance. Uh, so the example that I put up here is the operations excellence committee that we have ten, I believe, frontline folks that are part of this, Renee is facilitating that group and already seen some great suggestions, um, you know, such as, you know, Mark's churches on map so that drivers know if they have a hot load, where's that local church? And they can quickly go to that area. That's a simple, uh, quick fix that we can easily make. There's also, um, you know, managing call-ins and taking care of making sure that we have coverage and so forth. So we're addressing that. Anyway, just one example, if you go ahead and turn the page. Um, this is, we have some questions in last morning about leaf bag program. So I thought I would show you some pictures of this very well-used program that uh, we are happy to provide. And I say that um, tongue-in-cheek because I know we're still cleaning up some of the parks. Um, and I want to shout out to our team. Andy King spearheads the trailer container program for this particular service. And then Walt Lake is the supervisor. He and Rick Larrabee, who's our, one of our veteran drivers, went and cleaned up parks just this last, last week, actually, starting on Monday and went through, uh, well, Wednesday, excuse me, went through to Friday. But this is an example of what happens in those parks. And so again, this is not a bad thing, to be honest with you. This is what it's designed to do. We we don't put a lot of containers out because we've learned over time that those containers get socked in with the lead. So and if we're using a skidster to go scoop up those leaves around those containers, it can cause some issues or damage. Um, accidents running into those containers because they can't see them. So um, we only put containers out to mark the spot, if you would. And it's very, it's okay for residents to put their bags on the ground. And so we'll make sure we advertise that better next year because we get those complaints of, hey, I have to put them on the ground. It's like, well, that's okay. We want you to do that. So.
Anyway, I'm picking them up with the skidster.
We need to do that.
We need to do that.
Yeah, make sure we get those. Caterers in charge to get.
Anybody want to go?
So there's questions about how like leaf bags cost themselves when we purchase them. Uh, just to to state in twenty twenty three, this program was just almost ninety four thousand dollars. Um, part of that is the purchase of those bags. We do sometimes have leftover bags. So if we do have that, we don't order quite as many, but there's stats there for you. And we'll determine the cost for this year coming up. Um, just to give a district overview, because I I wanted to make sure that you understand how many, how, what our resources are and how our operations work. Um, we have sixty one equipment operator allocations that are, uh, that include the apprentices and trainers. Each of the equipment operators works for ten. I mentioned that previously, uh, for for ten work week of the litigating day off. So uh, the that allows each driver or group to have a four-day weekend every five weeks, basically. So there's a nice perks to that particular schedule. Um, what the challenge is, though, is we have twenty percent of our equipment operators off every day. So we make sure that we have that coverage. Um, there's, there's six groups that cover thirty eight to forty five routes per day. And so I've given you a breakdown of what that looks like. And here when we do it differently, because it is an outline area and it grew so darn quick, uh, as Sherry knows and feels. Um, so that that's just kind of how things run there. Each of the groups that we have has a lead equipment operator who basically is out there on the the street uh, helping to direct traffic, if you would, of their group and and lead the way, making sure all about and the garbage is quite picked up if there are a garbage route and the recycling is picked up. Uh, the thing with Harbin that we do is that that the same group will go and pick up garbage first. You may have heard this. When I talked about this before, they pick up garbage first, take it to the transport landfill, and they all go back and pick up recycling and take one trip to the Rocky Mountain Recycling Center in Salt Lake. And that's to try to reduce uh, the miles and the time mainly is what they do that. Um, and then we have the two equipment operators that are assigned for the frontload routes that go up the canyon and also service um city halls and libraries. Two trailer equipment operator allocations that are assigned to the trailer programs that run mid uh, February through mid-October. And then we start the leaf bag program. We do about fourteen rentals a day. As you know, we're adding the option for a resident to reserve or rent a container, a roll-off container. So we'll see how that goes and report that as we go. And then we'll shift on. And I'm not sure how many of you all have seen the org chart and really, uh, the crux of our workforce is not intentionally put at the bottom there, uh, but just to show how the structure of authority and and the responsibility really of of how our organization works. Hundred and one FTEs, so sixty five of those being equipment operators. This kind of gives you the structure of administration, management. But with all the programs that we have, we do really need Justin Tough, the only two, two on a uh, to be over the residential collections. And then Justin also is over the apprentice program. And each of those folks share uh, the crux of our workforce, uh, forty nine equipment operators and lead equip, lead operators and then their apprentice program. No questions on that? Maybe just keep going ahead. And I'm going to turn this time over to Hazel. And if you would, of the benefits, well, you already did that. Were there any questions on benefits that we talked about? Enrollment is, maybe you'll touch on that if you would.
Yeah, we finished the enrollment on Friday of last week and um, I came in at six thirty in the morning so that I could be available and Lisa, the front table, I'd put make sure that she was here till five, five thirty, three hundred and thirty coming up at the end of the day. So that's me. Um, it was, I always enjoy being able to sit that with equipment operators. Um, even though we're doing the benefit, it helps build good relationships with them as well.
I mean, that's definitely a compliment. I would kind of echo everything you said, but it's really great. It's phenomenal. I should keep it flat on any reason that there, but it's not that it's because you've been a great lot. And sometimes you hire new people for the occasions. Sometimes they fulfill well, but sometimes they keep up and make good season though. So thank you for your hard work and everything during the extra hours you're spending as well. Thank you. File on your face.
Yeah.
Uh, that's a lot of employees to go through and you know what I'm on. So thank you.
Yeah, good work. Uh, just to to outline our employee recognition program, as I mentioned earlier. Um, and this is, if you would, look at this as like a paid for performer. So we're rewarding employees for going above and beyond um, their job expectations. And we, I have some dollars and cents outlined here, so almost sixty thousand dollars here today for safety, for outstanding employee awards, high fives, et cetera. But I did want to share one story of Michelle Hen. She is one of our lead equipment operators. Um, this is just an outstanding story. And this was posted on Nextdoor. And I received a lot of emails saying, hey, did you see this posted? Uh, and I'll read this to you. This is an elderly person that wrote this. Today, after several attempts, I spilled groceries loaded on my walker all over the porch steps and sidewalk. The garbage truck was in front, in front, picking up the trash can. Suddenly, the woman driver stopped, walked out of the truck and walked over to help. What? I was near tears. In a flash, everything was picked up and in my house. She was so respectful and kind. At at almost ninety decades old, how can I ever pay that forward? So here I go. What's that's Front Wasterecycling District. You have a stellar sterling employee who I sincerely thank and wish to honor with public note of gratitudes. You made my day. So just one example. Yeah, yeah, we have some, and you you said it. We have wonderful people working here. I'm proud and honored to serve with each and every one. So anyway, so there you have it. And then sweep account, thank you very much for that. Just to kind of just give it over you. Helen, do you mind quickly?
Oh, no, no. Um, what the sweep account is, I think the board probably understands this already, but you should hope for it. But it uh, takes our balance in our general checking account that we have assigned thing and we put it into an account overnight that invests in short-term investments. We sit back so we can make our our payments for the day and do what we need to do for daily bank business. But it actually covers, we get the investment income from that sweep account will cover the fee from our checking account. And that would save us about ten thousand dollars a year. And hopefully we'll get a little bit more on top of that, that at least we think that it will cover our fee.
Again, Graham, I'm keen for.
Yes, yeah.
This has been played before I came, but.
Yeah, thank you. All right. That's it. That's it for me. And let's go on to questions.
Any questions? I guess the next big issue in January would be Christmas sweep pickup.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, there is no need for closed session, Rachel, I understand. Any other board business? And request time for the next meeting for chair succession and twenty twenty four fourth quarter financial report. I'll look forward to that general managers' report and the follow-up on the Apple award for the CTO repasses. If there's nothing else, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion. This is great.
Is that you?
Yeah, I found it. I found it online.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear. I'm glad everything's okay. All right, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. All those.
Aye.
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 And I suggest there's no one that's proposing. That motion passes. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.